Yeah, I knew you, there's a lot of stuff that we talked about and I asked me. I knew you would uh make sure it got in here.
I know, I kept checking.
Have you unmuted the mics? Okay, tea time.
Okay. If I can have everyone's attention, today is January twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. It is six P M. And it's time for our city council meeting. If I could please have Pastor Roy Thompson, is he here? If you'll please come up, he is with Friendship Baptist Church on Brockington Road. And if you'll go to the mic, he will be doing our prayer.
All right, bow with me. Father, we come tonight and grateful to be a free people and a free nation and grateful to be citizens of the city of Sherwood. And thank you for establishing city government. You established three great pillars. You established, of course, the family, the church, and the state. And we gather tonight under that heading of the state civil government. And Father, as we kick off twenty twenty five, I'm grateful for our leaders here. I'm grateful for the people of Sherwood. And Father, I want to ask that you would give our leaders here, give our mayor and these men and women who are serving on the council, the wisdom that they need as they start off into a new year. Wisdom to make good decisions, insightful decisions, and decisions that will benefit the entire community across our city. Finally, Lord, I want to thank you for those who serve the city. I saw even tonight as I walked in, Lord, policemen, women who are serving as policemen, men who are serving as policemen, and they're serving a job that needs to be done. Lord, we have firefighters, we have those that are in emergency services, we have those who are here in other key city services. Would you grant them your favor and your grace as they go into this year? Would you watch over and protect them? And would you help us as a, as a city of citizens to work together with them for the good of this city? And we pray this in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Brooks?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Broderick?
Here.
Thomas?
Present.
Wade?
Here.
McCullough?
Here.
Townsend?
Here.
Treat?
Here.
And just so that everyone knows, council member Broderick is sick with the flu, which is why she could not be here in person. So we have set her up with a phone and a microphone. So if you heard that little "here," that was, that was April. So thank you for her willingness and links to, to be a part of this meeting.
And more importantly, thank her for not bringing the flu to us.
Yes, absolutely. All right, next up, we have a motion to reconsider ordinance twenty four thirty seven as amended by ordinance twenty four forty one regarding organizational rules and procedures. I'm going to turn this over to our city attorney to facilitate.
April, can you hear me okay?
I can, yes.
Good. Members of the council each year in January by statute were required to, the council is required to assemble and organize the governing body. And in years past, we have had ordinances in place regarding the rules and procedures of the council. And there's rules in place now that need to be reconsidered or maybe adopted and leave them the way that they are. But we need to get this matter of business taken care of before we move into the regular meeting. So with that being said, is there any discussion by any of the members of the council regarding the rules?
Sure, I just, I'll explain what I submitted for consideration. Two years ago, we added a line in the procedure. And so I was asking the council to consider reverting back to the way we were previously, where we did not specifically mention the debate section of the meeting. And of course, council members welcome and need to know the mayor's information and introducing agenda topics. I was just asking the council to consider reverting back where the debate is mainly with the council and therefore just removing that one line and going back to being silent about that issue. So that's, that's my ask on this rule.
Any other discussion?
I, I hear what she's saying, and having been on the council for a few years, I know that there's been, you know, as the lead, this is a city council meeting, I know we, the mayor has things to input, but when we start debating for the vote, since we're the only ones that could vote, it makes sense to go back to the way it used to be.
Well, that's not exactly correct. The mayor can vote in certain circumstances.
Only, yes, I understand that when it's a tie or to make something pass, I understand that. But it's the general, the, the percent of that occurring is less than two percent because ninety percent of the time or ninety-eight percent of the time, it's, we have a vote among the council that passes or fails a motion.
And, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I like to agree with that. In my time at the council, twenty years, I, I don't think that the mayor very, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Cobb, the mayor, whether it's been Mayor Harmon, Mayor Stedman, Mayor Young, or Mayor Hightounzel, I can, I don't remember very, very few times in my span of these mayors, have we ever had a mayor, very seldom break a tie or have reason to vote. So this is called the city council meeting, and I think it's for the city council to discuss and among ourselves, if the mayor's input is requested, we can certainly ask the mayor for input. But to actually enter into
The debate.
Debate, I don't think that's necessary.
And I, I'm not making that comment to be disparaging at all, mayor.
I will say though, that historically, in my tenure, that's always been the rule, that all the mayors have always had input on, on the discussion. And they provide information that the council might not have by virtue of the fact that they're here on a day-to-day basis and, and council members may not be that engaged.
I think, I'm sorry to interrupt, I think there's a delay, but the difference is we, before, there wasn't a specific line in there. And I don't know that it's necessary, if it's just a every now and then to offer information or a fact, that I wouldn't consider that part of the debate. So that's why I'm asking for a friendly amendment to the current rules to remove that one line.
Are you advocating removing that one line but not adding any other language?
Correct, just to remove the line so it's silent like it was in the past.
Any other discussion?
So I will say, when I saw this on our agenda, I went in just kind of to look at the surrounding cities. And I will say, I did not see the language in surrounding cities. And so then I went and looked at surrounding cities' council meetings and then their mayors or whoever else on the staff, they did comment as needed. And there wasn't a problem and the language was not in there.
It's silent.
Was, it wasn't in their rules. But they did participate as needed, like they were saying. I did come to meetings before, you are right. The primary did participate and, you know, when they, when they were asked stuff. So again, I don't know that the language has to be in there for everybody to, to be able to get information that they need to give, from what I see.
And I'm, I'm going to piggyback off of that. As long as there's not any specific language that's going to potentially restrict us as council members to be able to ask the mayor questions.
Never.
Or for her to be able to provide information that we may not already have, then I'm okay with that. But there has, I just feel that there has to be an open line for the mayor to be able to participate in some shape, form, or fashion.
And I would agree with that. We're not asking that, we're just saying the word, basically it's debating back and forth, the debate.
Yeah, that's exactly, that's the intent.
Is that your intent, Ms. Broderick?
Yes, it is.
I feel like the word debate could use some definitions. So to me, it's specifically, can y'all give me an example of a situation that she would be prohibited from speaking in moving forward?
I'm trying to think, like, we have some things for the, tonight, some of the ordinances, we may have a debate about some of the topics. And it's the council's discussion that, when we're debating on some of the pieces.
So in the midst of that debate, if we ask the mayor a question?
That's okay.
Then that would still be?
She can respond, correct.
May I ask a question then?
So the danger in restricting the language is if something is said that I know is not feasible or inaccurate, then I cannot give you all that information. How am I to then relay that information to you all?
This isn't about relaying facts. I mean, for however many years Sherwood has been in existence, this, this line has never been in the rules before two years ago. Nothing is changing with the fundamentals of city council business. It's, it's just strictly, if there's facts that need to be relayed or the council has incorrect information, by all means, but, but that's not what I would consider debate. What I would consider debate is when it is a legislative matter where the city council is deciding, yes, we're going to make an ordinance, no, we're not going to make an ordinance, eh, and opinions, you know, I think we should because, that's a debate, that's not a fact that, that the council is missing. Those are the types of things I'm talking about. Not, not to limit feeding factual information or introducing topics. I mean, I don't want there to be a misunderstanding.
Let me point out for the council too, that in this statute, it, it clearly indicates that in a mayor council form of government, the mayor shall be the ex officio president of the city council and shall provide at its meetings.
Yes.
We can't do anything at the council level to limit that because that's a state statute.
No, agree.
And the, the mayor is the, the presiding officer for the meeting.
I would also comment on the very last, in, in your notes, Steve, uh, Mr. Cobb, excuse me, the part about that we will not enter, when we have public comments on that very last page, that we do not enter to a debate or just conversation when we have the public comments. That's kind of new, I think you added, correct?
That was added in February of that year, that was Marina's. And after we talk about this and decide what you want to do on that, then I've got a couple of other points I'd like to ask you to consider.
Are you wanting to vote on this each piece separately or?
Yes.
Okay.
So Steve, do I need, can I make a motion to have these rules amended and it needs a second? Is that how to proceed?
Okay, April, do you want to make a motion?
She did. She had to ask you.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the rules as presented with deleting the one line in the procedure paragraph that reads the mayor may participate in debate, et cetera.
I'll second that. You have a motion by council member Broderick and a second by council member Brooks. Roll call, please. Thomas?
Aye.
Townsend?
Aye.
Treat?
Aye.
McCullough?
Aye.
Wade?
Aye.
Broderick?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Okay. In the notes or the, I'd like to ask the, the council to give some consideration to the continuation of the public comment part
Okay.
of the rules or to discuss this. And I will tell you that we've all just come from a municipal league meeting and there was quite a bit of discussion. And, and I, I took a poll informal among city attorneys that were in the meeting that I was in. And I would tell you that the trend is that the, the public comment, the open-ended public comment that we've had at the end of the meetings over, over the past year or two, that people, the councils in other towns don't do that anymore. They, they, it is, they consider it to be a city council business meeting and, and that's what it's for. You may want to consider keeping the part about public comment on agenda items. But the, the issue is, and if you saw the article that I attached in the, the handout, once you give that public forum freedom, then the control aspect that you have is lost.
I make that motion that we just allow public comment for agenda items only.
We have a motion by council member Brooks. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by council member Thomas to only allow public comment on agenda items. Roll call, please. Thomas?
Aye.
Townsend?
Aye.
Treat?
Aye.
McCullough?
Aye.
Wade?
Aye.
Broderick?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
And just one thing, Steve, I want to comment about that. If someone has an issue, they can call one of the council members and we can get it on the agenda and make it. So we are not saying we don't want to hear from what you have to say, but let's have it go through the process. Because I don't want anybody to think that we're trying to stifle their, because we work at their pleasure.
No, you're, all y'all's emails are available and they can, they can send that in there. So we're not, it's just, it just won't be at the meeting. So we'll delete that section from the rules. Now, with respect to the remaining sections of the, the rules, can we have a motion to adopt or re-adopt as?
As amended?
Yes, but except for the amendments.
Move for adoption of the rules as amended?
Can I have one point before we vote on that?
Okay.
Just to ask you, Steve, for clarification on that. It doesn't say in here how it will be addressed if somebody is off topic.
Oh.
Is that something we need to cover in the actual rules?
It's my understanding that if, if, if the rule is that it's, you have to go on the topic and then you deviate from the topic, that the chair can ask you to either get back on topic
Okay.
or to have a seat.
Okay.
Or exit, yes.
That, that would be my job. And we would have several ways that we could address that, either with gavel, I have the ability to actually mute the mic if the person's not willing to. It also, in there, it also talks about council members. You can also ask
Yes.
for, for it to cease or removal of, okay?
Okay. Thank you.
So we do still have a motion to approve as amended by council member Brooks.
Can I clear her, which, I just saw two sentences. The, the sentence says, public comments regarding not on the agenda. That's the only sentence that has to be removed, am I correct?
That section?
No, I think that whole section.
There's a whole section on the, the back page.
I know, that whole section. But I didn't see the three-minute rule except under that section.
No, it's in, it says, comments must be germane to the topic and will be limited to three minutes in length.
Okay, but thank you.
It was on the previous page.
Previous, okay.
Okay, once again, we have a motion by council member Brooks as amended. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a second by council member Townsend. Roll call, please. Thomas?
Aye.
Townsend?
Aye.
Treat?
Aye.
McCullough?
Aye.
Wade?
Aye.
Broderick?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
All right.
Yes, the motion passed unanimously.
And just to allow everybody to know, this is kind of the year that the city clerk and I have agreed to kind of change up reading of ordinances and so forth. So we ask for your patience as we work on our new system, okay? We have up approval of the minutes of the regular call meeting on December sixteenth, twenty twenty four, as transcribed. Move for approval. We have a motion of approval by council member Brooks. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by council member Wade. Roll call, please. Thomas?
Aye.
Townsend?
Abstain.
Treat?
Abstain.
McCullough?
Abstain.
Wade?
Aye.
Broderick?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
We have, you have received the December twenty twenty four financials. Colleen is out of town, so if there is anything that's really pressing on that, if you guys would please give her a call, as I may not know that information.
There were a couple that went over budget for last year, the twenty twenty four, so did we get that addressed? And I'll call her.
They're, they're still working on it to be on, cleaning things up, so.
Okay.
All right. You have before you the approval to remove twenty twenty four disposable assets from the city fixed asset listing. This is one of those things that you, that's required every year of cities to do. It's, it's basically for cleanup purposes. And, you know, if there are items that are still sellable, they go through the, you know, the government website and so forth. We follow the state procedures on all that.
I want to commend the police chief and the forgiving, I think he's told me on more than one occasion, that there's some very small towns that we have some cars that we, rather than send them to the junker, we help them out. So thank you for being good neighbors, I appreciate that.
So is there a motion? Some moved. We had a motion by council member Williams to
I'll second them.
Thomas?
Aye.
Townsend?
Aye.
Treat?
Aye.
McCullough?
Aye.
Wade?
Aye.
Broderick?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
All right, next up, we've got committees and commissions. Under Planning Commission, item A, please.
An ordinance amending the existing zoning code with respect to conditional use permits and for other purposes, this is the third reading.
There you are. Mr. Walden, if you could please address this?
Yes, so this item is dealing with what effectively amounted to a scrivener's error and what the, the scrivener's error being something that was an unintentional error was added at the direction of the planning commission. They requested that some language be put in there, that the basis of review by the city council would be de novo. And it was stated it would not be de novo. And so this is meant to correct that to where the basis of review is de novo. The idea is if, if there is an appeal of a case that goes before Planning Commission on a conditional use and they make substantial changes, then it would automatically just go back to Planning Commission rather than going up to y'all in, in that situation. And that's, that's intended so that they're not essentially trying to play games where they're like, we're not going to give our best case to the, the Planning Commission, we'll, we'll save it for council, show them a lot of shiny objects, try to get it approved there and, and do it in that, that method. So it's, it's meant to kind of help serve public interest.
Hey, hey, James, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
I thought what, what Charlie Harmon said about this a couple months ago had a lot of merit. You know, the council gets put in a position a lot of times to hurry up and make a decision because whoever's on the, the, the end of the deal has waited to go through Planning Commission and then it's got to wait to come to our agenda. And then by the time it gets to us, I feel like the council gets a lot of pressure sometimes to hurry up and make a, a quick decision. Because time is always money. But I thought that he had a very good point, you know, that if it was something small, if we pass this, the council is limiting themselves where we could not listen to them and make a change. Of course, if they came and it was a totally different story, or like you said, they had a, a whole new ballgame that they're showing us, we could always at that point send it back. But what, what is the merit to passing this rather than allowing it to go ahead and come to the council? And then if it's, if it's out of line or way different, sending it back at that point rather than limiting? Because if it was small, we could hear it and possibly, you know, proceed that night and, and things would go much quicker.
Based, based on my experience.
What's, what's the downside to that, I guess is my question?
Based, based on my experience, if it's something small, then it, it automatically gets handled at the Planning Commission meeting. Typically, if something, if something fails at Planning Commission, it's because of a major issue. A lot of times, if, if it's a small issue and let's say that it either is going to be something that bends toward the applicant or bends toward the, the request of the city in that situation, a lot of times there'll be a, a conditional approval and then based on that condition, it goes forward to council with the idea that it's going to be corrected by the time it gets to council. So usually the only time that something's going to end up at council is if the applicant is really adamant to not go along with anything that the Planning Commission has requested.
But, but this is for, if they want to appeal it, they can appeal it regardless. But this is saying if they come and appeal it to the council, but if they bring up anything new, then it, then this is saying we shall not listen to them anymore, right? This is not about them coming with the appeal in the first place.
I, I think it's, it's with, it's based on the idea that they would be amending the application at council rather than amending the application as it is presented before the Planning Commission.
And point of clarity?
Yes, I hear what you're saying. I, I just thought that the, the number of times that someone could abuse the system would be very, very limited versus, I just don't know that it's worth the council limiting what they can and cannot do. I don't know that there's value to that, I guess is my point.
So for, for point of clarity, if, if, if this is, what you're saying is so if it gets voted down, very different information is, is then changed and given to the council, not only does it go back to the Planning Commission for reconsideration, but it also allows the public involvement? It doesn't say in there, then you, you have to open up a new public hearing, which would only be fair for those who are impacted by this, is that?
Yes, and, and the, and the city council is going to be the one that's the determiner whether or not substantial new information has been presented.
Right.
So in, in that situation. It, it's, what, what it's really intended to do is to prevent somebody from bringing a conditional use with a plan that staff has not seen and hasn't had the ability to review. And that, that short circuits the, the ability of staff to
Since we have experienced that in the last three or four years, I hear what you're saying, James, and I'm not opposed to that. And, and April, I, I hear you, what you're saying as well, but I, I don't think it's, it's not that I, I'm not going to plant three trees, but you're asking me to plant five. That's, that's still about trees, so that's okay, we can still hear that. It's when the trees become what, the roof is now going to be metal or whatever. The thing is, when they just jump ship into a whole different category about the building or the, or the land piece. I'm not
But I guess, who determines that, Beverly, that's the question, who determines?
That would be a determination of the city.
Three trees versus five trees is okay, but you see, you see what I'm saying? The council wouldn't have that decision anymore about whether you could talk about three trees versus five trees.
Well, but the key is, is, well, here's, here's why I disagree with you on that part, April. Because the reason they're appealing had to do with how many trees had to put for a barrier. I'm just making stuff up, okay, you guys know that, don't you? And the thing is that that's what they got turned down for, they're appealing to us about the trees. So that's still in line with what the, the reason of denial was.
Correct.
Okay. Am I doing okay, James, you want to hire me?
Yeah, yeah, you're selling it good.
So, but if it's, if it's about roofing and they're talking about, and they come to us about trees, two different things, send it back to the Planning Commission. I'll support that.
The, the idea is to, to short circuit something where, let's say that the building was going to be placed here and it got turned down. And so they're coming back with one that they, they're like, okay, well, we think you guys will approve it if the building's here and the Planning Commission hasn't seen it.
Right, it's not, is this our second reading of this? Because we had it last month.
This is the third reading.
Okay, third, okay.
I'm spreading the rules in place, or move for adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion by council member Brooks and a second by council member Thomas for adoption. Roll call, please.
Thomas.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
Treat.
Aye.
McCullough.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Broderick.
No.
Williams.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
The motion passes, seven yes, one no.
We now have item B under Planning Commission.
An ordinance to approve a conditional use permit for the property located at fourteen nine one two, Highway one oh seven, for a fire station and for other purposes. This is the first reading.
Yes, so this is a conditional use permit for a fire station for Gravel Ridge Fire Department. The architectural renderings were not included in the packet. Well, maybe they might, they might have been. No, they weren't, they weren't. It's going to be very, very attractive, it'll be a major upgrade. This is located in the former Humms Hardware, so it's at a good, nice, convenient location where you would want a fire station to be located. We worked with the applicant on eight conditions. Those are mainly to protect the adjacent neighbors and to kind of ensure that it looks attractive. It went through Planning Commission, we didn't have any opposition at the case, and it passed through. And so it came to, by the Planning Commission with a recommendation for the passage.
I have a concern about one thing on this, James. In read the Planning Commission minutes, it was very obvious that y'all set a limit that the building could only cover thirty-five percent of the land. And everything that they presented, even on this proposal to us, shows that it's going to be thirty-seven percent of the land. So that's, I mean, they're already breaking what you've set for a parameter, so how are we going to get around that?
It is, basically, condition number eight is approved. Site plan shall meet the thirty-five percent building lot coverage requirement where the applicant shall obtain approval of a variance for the building lot requirements. So essentially what this does is it allows them, when they come back through site plan review, to revise that or request a variance of the board of zoning adjustment. It's basically just a contingent condition in that situation.
Are we expecting it, I mean, I don't care if it's thirty-five or thirty-seven, to be honest with you, but since the limit was set at thirty-five, do y'all tend to allow a thirty-seven? Or do they have to change their plan to bring it down to the thirty-five typically?
It's one of those things we'll have to work out with the Planning Commission BZI to figure it out. It's two percent, so I think we can probably fork something out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do y'all want to just have one reading on that tonight?
I'll make the motion that we place it on the second reading.
We have a motion to advance the reading by Councilmember Wade.
I'll second it.
We have a second by Councilmember Williams. Roll call, please.
Thomas.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
Treat.
Aye.
McCullough.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
An ordinance to approve a conditional use permit for the property located at fourteen nine one two, Highway one oh seven, for a fire station and for other purposes. This is the second reading.
Move suspend the rules and place it on third reading.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brooks to advance the reading to the third.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Wade. Roll call, please.
Thomas.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
Treat.
Aye.
McCullough.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
An ordinance to approve a conditional use permit for the property located at fourteen nine one two, Highway one oh seven, for a fire station and for other purposes. This is the third reading.
Move for the adoption.
Second.
We have a motion for adoption by Councilmember Williams and a second by Councilmember Thomas. Roll call, please.
Thomas.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
Treat.
Aye.
McCullough.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Under Planning Commission, I'm saying this solely to give her so. We have item C.
An ordinance amending the official zoning district map for the twenty-seven point nine three acres located north of East Maryland Avenue, beginning approximately six hundred and forty-six feet west of the intersection of East Maryland Avenue and Brockington Road and for other purposes. This is the first reading.
And just to remind everybody, this is about zoning, not about site plans, drainage, just the zoning. Take it over.
So I've got this career-long bingo card for odd occurrences that happened in my career. This is the first time I've ever encountered a PUD rezoning to a PUD rezoning. It's in large part because the original PUD ordinance and PUD plan for it has been lost to time. Don't know where the records are for that. But beyond that, the applicant had sort of some updated ideas about how they desired to develop the property. And so this is going to be a hundred and three lot subdivision consisting of single-family detached, single-family attached dwellings. It will be a gated subdivision with private streets. There is a requirement that they will set up a property owners association or an improvement district that would have a maintenance fee to go associated with those private streets to ensure that there's an adequate maintenance fee going for maintenance of that. The POA couldn't be discharged until or unless the city said, yeah, we'll allow you to discharge it in that situation. So there are kind of some legal protections that exist with that. They are providing a green belt dedication with this, will not agree, they're providing a green belt dedication or a trail, trail land dedication for the power line trail easements. That's one of the things that will be a part of this. They'll be providing internal connection from the subdivision to the trail so that the trail will serve as amenity to the property. Additionally, they have some drainage areas, creeks that flow through there. They're going to sort of dedicate that to be persistent green space, and so that'll be a kind of a green belt amenity for the development as well. But it's a hundred and three lot subdivision, it went through Planning Commission. We did have questions a little bit about the development process. This is the first step in that development process with the zoning plan. The zoning plan basically says that you have your zoning locked in for this property, that then you can advance to developing the engineered drawings, all of the construction drawings and the preliminary approval to go forth on a preliminary plat. That's the point at which anything related to drainage, sewer, water, all of the utilities and all of those detailed plans will be reviewed for compliance with the subdivision regulations. But essentially what this is doing is giving them the go-ahead to say, yes, you are zoned to do this. And then allow them to move forward.
All right, I did notice that there were some residents in the Stonehill subdivision who were, had some questions on this and a lot about the drainage.
Yes.
And I do notice in here, there's some, could be some drainage issues. Do you think you've addressed all those drainage issues with those residents?
So the answer that we provided to them and is really the honest answer that we can provide for this is the drainage will be reviewed through the subdivision development process just like it would be with any R1 development or any other development. And so more than likely, some of the drainage issues that they've discussed, I anticipate that this probably will address those particular issues that we've seen that are to the west in that. But we will dig deeper into all of the particulars on exactly, kind of the hydrological analysis and all of that that's required with the subdivision process.
And I guess my second question is, we have a, Ms. Williams and I have a subdivision in our ward that there are issues with a defunct POA and.
Their bill of assurance is over thirty years old.
The bill of assurances and all this with the private streets and it's really just, I guess it bothers me that we might get into some kind of situation again with something like this. And now we've got alleyways that are falling apart and everything else and.
And they want the city to fix it because the city allowed it and it's not the city's property because it's private property, just like these are private streets, so.
And this seems like a fairly large subdivision, so I'm just, it just, that kind of concerns me a little bit, I guess.
And I definitely understand that concern. I live in a subdivision where we've got a pond and we've got various amenities and, Lord, we have to, it's like a five hundred dollar yearly assessment, right? The idea behind this, that some of the reforms that we put into the PUD regulations were to require in that bill of assurance the establishment of the POA or the improvement district. With that, again, there's a, there is a provision in there that they cannot go defunct. So it has to automatically stay alive and they have to be able to vary their assessment based upon the needs of sort of their capital needs.
How do you monitor that, James?
Again, it would be a situation where it's really a private, private agreement. So it's not, it's not a foolproof.
Can I ask a question regarding that, Beverly, before y'all move on? I'm sorry.
That's okay.
James, I didn't mean to interrupt.
You're fine.
Before y'all move on. You want to finish, James? I'm sorry.
I was just saying, it's not, it's not foolproof by any means. I'm not saying that, but it is, if you are going to have a setup where you have private streets, it is the best possible setup. The applicant is here that they can further clarify anything.
We do currently have three, right now gated, four. Chimney Rock, Miller's Point, Austin Gardens.
And where April lives.
And, right, I don't.
Where you live.
Okay, so we already have a precedence for that.
I was going to ask, Steve, I saw you made a comment at the Planning Commission, and I feel like the one in my ward, it's written in when homeowners buy their lot or their home. So it's legally binding. Can the city have an impact on how they would write that up so it's in their closing documents? So their agreement is a little more contractual that way?
I would say, I mean, that's the type of information that has to be disclosed at closing. In the structure of the bill of assurance, the city is, we are going to review the bill of assurance when it goes through the plating process. And so it will have the clause in there that the POA or the improvement district, whichever is created, cannot be discharged except upon approval by the city council. So.
I realize there's other ones in the city, but we just have a big boondoggle in our area, so.
Another question, Steve, this might be a Steve question. Bill of assurance, because of this particular neighborhood situation there, I was told that they only had a life of thirty years, and after thirty years, that is defunct.
I think the neighborhood that you're talking about, they never even set it up.
Well, no, but the bill of assurance, but it was on the deeds for the bill of assurance and it doesn't exist after thirty. My question is, does the bill of assurance only last thirty years? So if.
And my answer is, I'm not sure.
Okay.
It's, I mean, we will require that it be written in a manner that essentially it cannot be discharged unless the city approves of discharge.
Thank you. And then I just had one other question. The, I know what a single-family home is and I know what single-family attached dwellings are. There's two kinds, there's duplexes and there's townhouses. What are we, what are we looking at for the interpretation?
Essentially, they're talking about townhouses.
Okay. Because I have friends that live in, at the community around Hendrix that has the townhouses and it's a great little community, so, okay. DUA is density per acre, is that what that is?
Dwelling units per, dwelling units per acre. So the equivalent density of this, I think, what they propose is about four and a half dwelling units per acre with the open space and everything, which is comparatively speaking, it's, what they've done is they've shrunk some of the lots and they have more open green space. So it's, it's not that far off, I would say, from what you would see in a normal R1 subdivision, it's pretty close.
What's the pleasure of the council?
Move will be approved.
Maybe suspend the rules and place it on second reading.
We have a motion to suspend the rules, put on second reading by Councilmember Brooks and a second by, was that Councilmember Wade? Yes.
Thomas.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
Treat.
Aye.
McCullough.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
An ordinance amending the official zoning district map for the twenty-seven point nine three acres located north of East Maryland Avenue, beginning approximately six hundred and forty-six feet west of the intersection of East Maryland Avenue and Brockington Road and for other purposes, second reading.
I'm going to suspend the rules and put on the third reading.
We have a motion to advance the readings by Councilmember Thomas and a second by Councilmember McCullough.
Thomas.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
Treat.
Aye.
McCullough.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
An ordinance amending the official zoning district map for the twenty-seven point nine three acres located north of East Maryland Avenue, beginning approximately six hundred and forty-six feet west of the intersection of East Maryland Avenue and Brockington Road and for other purposes, third reading.
Move for the adoption. Second.
Motion for adoption by Councilmember Wade and a second by Councilmember Thomas.
Thomas.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
Treat.
Aye.
McCullough.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Next up, we have item nine.
An ordinance amending ordinance twenty-one forty regarding the adoption of new policies and procedures for the Department of Humane Animal Services and for other purposes. This is the second reading.
And I had requests that this just be read and Councilmembers Townsend and Councilmember Treat, who are the new sponsor of this, have not had time to work with the request at Animal Control or through Mr. Cobb, so they're just asking that this just be read and then they'll work with our city attorney on amendments for next month. Is that depleting, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, I'd just like to have time to talk to the department heads and review the feedback from the December meeting with the council, comments that they had.
Yes, the same. I recognize that this is a complex policy, so we definitely want to do our due diligence for the residents of Sherwood. So some more time would be much appreciated.
Just that, some people have asked, you know, when they've been looking at this, thank you, girls, for picking it up, but if in the definition, you might, this is a friendly amendment to, we're looking at, if they defined pit bull as a certain percent, you know, fifty percent or more, and then those that are mixed, because the majority of them are mixed breeds and they don't have enough, so that was a suggestion that someone gave to me this week. I will pass it on to you guys as a sponsor that that could be considered.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay.
We'll move on to item ten.
An ordinance amending previous ordinances regarding purchases allowed without competitive bidding, establishing the bid threshold for the City of Sherwood, Arkansas pursuant to state law and for other purposes. This is first reading.
I think you all received the letter that we received from the state that basically it's just based upon inflation, the CPI, the amount's basically the same. It's just, it's been that way for a long time. And they come up, I guess every five years, they do a calculation based upon inflation and that gives the new number.
I have a question, though. Just because we can, should we? Is our budget prepared to take this hit, is what I'm saying?
It's not, so.
Let's just say, I'm just saying this, okay? So we've, our budget's set for the year and now we can, now we can do wave competitive bidding up to forty-five thousand.
Well, forty, forty-two.
Almost forty-three.
Forty-two, I'm sorry, forty-three thousand, okay? And for instance, something comes up and we decide to do stuff. Are we, our budget, are we prepared for any additional hits to our budget? This might curtail. This might curtail, um-
So this would not affect the budget? Whatever, the, the budget has already been set. It just, so it's not saying there's additional items. It's just the procedure in terms of, you know, if the, the item is 43,000, the item's 43,000, if the item's 37,000, if it's in the budget, it's already in the budget. What it does do is it helps at times to expedite the process. And, you know, sometimes honestly, when, uh, what the department heads do is they, they call around. We have to, we have to get multiple ones. It's whether or not it's advertised out, and then you've got to wait 30 days and, and all that type of stuff. And then sometimes you end up with more.
They'll still get three bids to get, make sure we get our lowest price.
Yes, sir.
You don't have to put it out.
I guess that's what I want to make sure, is that we're still getting our three, that we're, even though you don't have to.
What, Steve?
They, they typically, anyway, they will get, um, that-
Yeah.
Correct?
But this allows, if they do that in-house, but I, I just want to be clear that this is raising the limit where you don't have to have bids.
And so, well, but what they do is, in order for us to stay in compliance with like legislative audit and so forth, what they do is they, they keep a file of, we've called, we got this bid from this company, this bid from this company, this bid from this company.
Depending on the way we purchase-
Say that again louder, please. Start over, please.
Depending on the way we purchase, whether we go through the tips or we bid it out, if we put it out to bid it, we'll need to exceed that amount, so yes.
If it's under that amount-
Tips is easy.
It keeps us still doing the same thing, and checks and balances, all that other good stuff. So we still will be doing the same thing.
Right. It, they still, they still always don't, denote who they've talked to, what the different bids that they received are.
Does this also include contracted services or just purchases? I'm think, I'm thinking about the sidewalk section and stuff that we were, is that, is that purchase services? Does that include purchase services?
I don't think it does. When they, I, this was part of one of our presentations that we saw. I think this is specific to purchases, not contracts.
Not contracted services?
Yes.
Okay.
And they were very specific about that.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank y'all for their information.
It's on my notes somewhere.
And I think y'all were encouraged by the municipal league.
To go to that one.
To match.
Yes.
Okay. All right, then my, then I guess it says, um, I guess, and that's my question, and y'all ladies paid attention there, right?
And just so the public knows, it, 100% of the people sitting around this table today were at the Arkansas Municipal League for Training in January. And that is, from my record, the first time the city has been represented, 100% of all of its elected officials. So kudos to my colleagues.
Including the one that's not sitting around the table.
The one who's imaginary over there.
Yes, but I, I do think that they did cover that pretty extensively in their session.
I'm just trying to, I just want to make sure that. I think that we all got so many emails and phone calls and everything about, you know what, the sidewalk's on keel, and I'm just trying to think things through.
Didn't want to set us up again.
I don't want to be set up on, you know, I just don't want to.
Well, I will tell you, everything that we do, that one particular person seems to, uh, even when we go through the tips program and the state procurement programs and so forth, so.
I, I did, for clarification, are we saying that if a, if a purchase is under that dollar amount, a, a, uh, bid is not required by state law or to get different pricing from different companies? Is that correct?
Yes.
You get pricing, but doesn't have to be the bid format, bid procedure?
Correct. You don't have to-
Is not required.
Yeah, you, you still have to get, unless it can be doc, documented, that there is only one person who could possibly provide that service. And that typically doesn't happen. So like, if we need to get, you know, a bathroom built and the plumber part of it, we contact three different, you know, plumbers and look for the best possible price, and they denote every one of those, so we keep those type of records. Or the electrician, or the people who do the mortar, you know, whatever, um, type of a thing. But those are things that we have to do, whether or not, this is it going out to a formal bid where you have to put it out in the newspaper, wait X amount of time, those type of things, which really can slow down being able to get things done.
Only, only question that I have about it, uh, is in section two, where it talks about, uh, this is generally every five years, uh, anticipation of increases to pre-bid amounts expected in, in five-year increments. But then it goes on to say that, uh, if we pass it the way it's written, that this ordinance will automatically adjust to the new increased pre-bid threshold. I, I personally don't like that because that's five years from now, that's, could be eight new people, who knows? On the council, I, I think that needs to be looked at each time and not just be an automatic adjustment.
If I'm not mistaken, and Steve, please correct me, but I believe the state reviews it every five years.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Right.
The five years is based off of what the state does.
Right, but the way this is written is, we wouldn't be discussing this. If we pass this, it will just automatically-
Yeah, in five years, we, we would automatically-
You would automatically follow what the state represents.
Yeah, it would just be what the state number is.
Yeah.
Recommends.
So you're, what you're saying is that, do we need to commit to that, let's just see what happens in five years?
That's my opinion, just to, just to have the conversation.
Let the new, you know, the council people know what's going on in five years.
What would that change?
I like that, and it allows the council, whoever that is, in five years to make that decision.
It's by the state, rec, requiring-
No, you don't have to-
We don't have to adopt it.
You don't have to adopt it, that's the, that's the thing. We, we could right now keep this at 35,000 and not go to 42,000. So if our budget was that, we don't want to do that, then we don't have to. But it allows you, if you want to, it's permissive.
Is it my understanding, though, you all could always revert back after the five years, too, in terms of, at any time, this could be amended and could be changed?
Then let's do it in five years when the new one comes up, to see if we like it or not. I kind of like what you're saying.
A motion to strike section two, is that what you want to do?
That, that's what I'd like to do. Well, uh, yeah, be the whole section, I guess, yeah.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Councilmember Wade and a second by Councilmember Williams to strike section two. Roll call, please.
Thomas.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
Treat.
Aye.
McCullough.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
An ordinance amending previous ordinances regarding purchases allowed without competitive big bidding, establishing the bid threshold for the city of Sherwood, Arkansas pursuant to state law and for other purposes as amended.
That'd be the first reading.
First reading, yes.
And maybe we suspend the rules and place it on the second reading as amended.
Second.
We have a motion to advance the reading by Councilmember Wade and a second by Councilmember Brooks. Roll call, please.
Thomas.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
Treat.
Aye.
McCullough.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
An ordinance amending previous ordinances regarding purchases allowed without competitive bidding, establishing the bid threshold for the city of Sherwood, Arkansas pursuant to state law and for other purposes as amended. This is the second reading.
Maybe we suspend the rules and place it on third reading as amended?
Second.
We have a motion to advance the reading to the third one by Councilmember Brooks as amended and seconded by Councilmember Thomas. Roll call, please.
Thomas.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
Treat.
Aye.
McCullough.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
An ordinance amending previous ordinances regarding purchases allowed without competitive bidding, establishing the bid threshold for the city of Sherwood, Arkansas pursuant to state law and for other purposes, third reading.
Move for the adoption.
Second.
We have a motion for adoption by Councilmember Thomas and a second by Councilmember Wade. Roll call, please.
Thomas.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
Treat.
Aye.
McCullough.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
We have item 11.
A resolution appointing certain persons to serve on various Sherwood committees.
Um, I believe we have the only non-council, uh, member on here in the audience. Um, so Marcy Welling, if you please rise, she is, um, to be replacing, um, Bruce Mason's term who had expired. Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Move for adoption of the resolution?
Second.
We have a motion for adoption by Councilmember Brooks and a second by Councilmember Williams. Roll call, please.
Thomas.
Aye.
Townsend.
Can I do aye, if I'm on the list?
Yes, ma'am.
Aye.
Treat.
That's a good question.
Aye.
McCullough.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Unless you don't want to serve.
Too late now.
Thank you.
We have item 12.
An ordinance creating requirements for massage businesses declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
First reading?
Yes, first reading.
Move for, um, suspend the rules and place it on second reading?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Williams and a second by Councilmember Townsend to advance the readings to the second. Roll call.
Thomas.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
Treat.
Aye.
McCullough.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
An ordinance for creating requirements for massage businesses declaring an emergency and for other purposes, second reading.
Move to suspend the rule and place it on the third and final reading?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Thomas and a second by Councilmember McCullough. Roll call, please, to advance the readings.
Thomas.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
Treat.
Aye.
McCullough.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
An ordinance creating requirements for massage businesses declaring an emergency and for other purposes, third reading.
Move for the approval. Second.
Motion for adoption by Councilmember Wade and second by Councilmember Thomas for approval. Roll call, please.
Thomas.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
Treat.
Aye.
McCullough.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brooks.
There is-
There is an emergency clause. Thomas.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
Treat.
Aye.
McCullough.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Um, old business. Under new business, we've got adjustment of the May and December 2025 city council meeting dates, um, due to holidays.
We want to move May to the 19th of May, move it up a week?
Currently, it falls on Memorial Day.
Which is the 26th, correct? So do we prefer to keep it a Monday or move it to a Tuesday? I like keeping it a Monday, but. But you check your social calendar, Mr. Shelby.
So your, your options are going to be Monday, the 19th, which, which would be the third Monday of the month, um, or to move it to Tuesday, the 27th, which is the fourth Tuesday of the month.
I would ask that we not do the 27th because the sobriety court team will be traveling that day, and we would not be able to attend, or I wouldn't be able to attend.
So if the 19th is amenable to everybody, okay? Now, if you all will please move your calendars now to December. Right now, you've got the council meeting following on December 22nd. Typically, we have moved it up to the, um, forward, so that would be the 15th. Otherwise, you're moving it back to the 29th. And I know sometimes people go out of town that-
Between Christmas and New Year's, yeah.
Yes. So is that acceptable to the council? Any objections to moving that to December 15th?
Let me look at my social calendar here.
You can arrange around it, there's ample time. Okay?
That'll work.
So we will make those adjustments. Uh, next up, we have a discussion over, um, whether or not we want to move to two council meetings a month. This is just for discussion purposes. I sent you all some information about some other cities and different options. Um, I could not find any cities where it wasn't full business on both of them when I called around. So they have two full city council meetings. Two cities, they take off the summer months and only do one city council meeting a, a month. As I was driving here, I received a call from Mayor Elmore, and he kind of, um, over in Jacksonville. He said, "The one thing about always having two city council meetings is sometimes there's really not business for that second city council meeting." But then, he said he feels like he always has to have it anyway because it looks bad if you cancel, uh, city council meetings. So that the two that do no summers were, um, Cabot and Conway.
And that was the months of June, July, August, and September?
Mm-hmm, and no December either, because typically, I, I couldn't find any city councils that do two in December. Everybody goes to one in December. So, um, we'll just open this up for discussion, for you guys to give your opinions. And I know that, um, our city clerk had, uh, an opinion she would like to express to you all.
Why, go first, city clerk.
Yes, as you all know, when the council decided to separate the clerk position from, um, the city finance director and separate those positions, they made the clerk part-time. And they based the compensation and the workload and everything like that on hours worked on one monthly meeting,
on one monthly meeting, which it can be adjusted, but just remember, keep in mind that.
Which brings the question, Steve, we had a discussion once before regarding that once someone's elected, we cannot change the terms of their contract, anybody, you know, and their benefit packages, is that not correct?
You can't change their duties based, you have to let them serve the term under the, what am I trying to say, the parameters in which they were elected.
That's what I'm saying, and this was elected.
You could change it when she's coming up for reelection, and that January, February, March of that year, you could say, okay, now prospectively, it's going to be that. But that's a very good point.
So I'm thinking, I don't think it's possible for us to go this year or next year because her terms of election was once a month, and I thought of that when I read your piece about that it's going to affect Charlotte, and I'm not saying it's a bad idea, but we've got to have to have someone record it, and it's not right, and it's against the law.
Well, I don't, but it's for all of us, though. She's a part-time city clerk, we're part-time council members, we would be all changing. And what you, what he, what we, what we're saying about his thing is that we can't take anything away from him. That's what he was saying, we couldn't take any way, thing away from Steve when he changed his location, but we can add things, you can always increase someone's salary, you could add work, you know, if we wanted to, and she's talking about her compensation, and I would agree with that, and.
But I just want to make sure we don't break, can we, this is the reason we're having discussion.
And that, you know, North Little Rock recently, they raised their city council salaries up to seventeen thousand dollars a year, and they meet twice a month. I don't, I'm not talking about that, but I'm just saying, for Charlotte, her workload probably, I don't even know what she gets paid, so I don't even, so I'm not even going to go there, but.
A dollar a meeting, she said.
And she gives us good candy, so.
I think it's also about vacation for her and her family.
Right, so, I mean, we would have to, I mean, we would look, need to look at compensation, I would think, if we're going to go to twice a ye, twice a month for her compensation, but we might want to look at our compensation as well if we're going to meet twice a month, so there's that as well, so.
That was a good discussion.
Are there?
I mean, seriously.
You know, are there any more?
But I do think, I do want to say that we have met in the last year, if we look back, how many times we met more than once a month?
Special meet, how many special meetings did we have this year?
Yeah.
It was three or four. Three or four. When I looked back, can't remember. So, if there's twelve months, and four of you don't meet June, July, August, September, and December, five months, that's seven, so you only have to meet three more times.
Okay, so, that's some, some food for thought.
Yeah, I, the, the feedback I got when I was making all these phone calls, the, the pros are that, you know, things can be expedited, however, they can also be expedited by waiving readings as, as well, you know? So there's two ways of doing that. They did not find a reduction in the length of meetings, or, you know, by and large, or it seems like if people are prone to talk a lot, they're going to talk a lot, you know, at two meetings, one meeting, three meetings, you know.
We're all looking across the eye.
Not to be offensive or anything, so.
Y'all be nice.
But I, I do think, though, that there are, we will work on ways in which, certainly from our end, that we can try to shorten meetings. For example, there's really no reason to give committee reports, we can email those out to y'all, and then if you have questions, contact the department heads. If it's something that needs to rise up to the council level, that certainly can be put, you know, on the agenda, but I think we're all adults, and we can all read, you know, reports and so forth. That could help cut down some different time as well. So, just please give that thought, and if anybody wants to sponsor something to change it, then please reach out to Mr. Cobb, otherwise, we can just kind of proceed and see how things go. And once again, that is something that can be potentially changed at any point throughout the year, if it looks like we've got a big need for that. Does that sound fair to everybody?
Yeah, so I want to make, I want to make sure we're on the same page, so I think we would like to change the meetings, but from what I'm hearing, we really can't until it's time for Charlotte to come up for reelection, so it's really.
We don't know, we don't know that, yeah.
That's a good.
We're not sure, we've got to check into the legalities of that, and I'm not sure everybody wants to go to two meetings necessarily.
Especially, we had three just elected, knowing it was only one meeting, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think we liked the thought of it at our workshop, the fact that we could come in and discuss something and talk about it as a unit, and then come back and vote on it.
Yeah.
But I also see the fairness of folks got hired with, you know, these expectations, and so I do think we would lack fairness in changing that, so I see the benefit, but I also want to take into consideration what people got hired to do and the salary they got hired for it.
And if the time issue is not going to be different than if that's twice a month, you know, hours and hours, that's, that's a little bit excessive, too.
And, and I would say, too, you know, council members always know that sometimes questions and so forth, you can call up department heads and, and get some of this stuff figured out before we even come to, to council, if it's, so not everything has to be litigated to the extent of which it is, all right.
I have one question.
Yes.
I, I know, I guess there's an ordinance that the, that the mayor or the council established, like the, the committees that we have, but is that where, so each committee then at that point is pretty well, makes their own rules to an extent?
Correct, yes, and that is certainly something that, and Mr. Cobb and I have talked about doing an over, one that would basically kind of give an overreaching one that allows, what I think gets to be a little cumbersome is, I think it would be better to announce that there will be a meeting instead of like constantly, if a committee only really meets quarterly, then going, oh, it's been canceled again, and canceled, you know, it just, it's, I feel like it's a bad look versus giving plenty of notice that they will be meeting this month, if that makes sense. And then it's up to the, the chairman and the committee members to determine how often they feel like they need to meet and under what circumstances. Does that all sound fair? Great, well, that is everything on the agenda. We've got, the only announcement is February seventeenth, city offices are closed for President's Day. You all did receive, and I'm not going to read it because it's pretty extensive, but you all do have a State of the City for you, it's, of course, will be put on the website. We've had a lot of great things happen this year. One of the things, well, there's, there's been so many, but five million, one hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars and forty-one cents in grant money, wow, I don't think we have even come close to ever getting a million, and we did over five million, so that's, that's phenomenal, and.
Which brings it, I'd love to still have that list of grants, yeah.
You know, we are, if, if we can get to a point where I'm like, not drowning, then that would be, that would be great. And then, so, but please look, there are lots of great highlights from this past year. Our departments and department heads, our city employees have done just a phenomenal job, and kudos to all of them. We will be, next month, we are hoping to be able to show a State of the City video, which is kind of like a highlight reel, some cities do that, and I know Heather's been working at doing that for the first time for us, and, and that will actually be able to be used as an economic tool to really promote our city.
Did Heather put this together?
Yes, Heather did.
It's very easy to read.
It is very easy to read, and if you look at what's stated, the cities look like pre-Heather and what they look like now, it's, they are much easier to read, the pictures help to tell the story, and I think people really enjoy it. So, that is everything, and at this time, I can entertain a motion for adjournment?
So moved. Second.
Second.
Motion by Brooks, second by Townsend, adjourned. You guys also have a Sherwood Shark sponsorship letter, if y'all will take that home and.
I went in the email today, or yesterday, so. Okay, let's see.